Having problems with it, it's not working today.
Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for May 6, 2020. For the record, council members Williamson, Rule, Aspero, Darling, McAllister, and Groth are present. We will now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does staff have any announcements?
No announcements today, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council, any announcements? All right, I have none as well. Next is the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the public the opportunity to address the mayor and council on items that are on the consent calendar or items not listed on the agenda. Is anyone registered to speak for such an item?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there anyone on the phone right now that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda that may be on the consent calendar?
If I may provide some instructions, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So this is not the public hearing, which is scheduled for later in the meeting, but if there's anyone attending who would like to speak during public forum, please use the raise your hand button, or star nine if you're participating on your smartphone, and you will be called upon.
Thank you, Melissa, appreciate that. So, given that there's no one that wants to speak during the open public forum, we'll now close the public forum.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
There is one who's raised their hand. I'm gonna check on this. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Obelbi?
Yeah, I made a mistake. I thought you were talking about the hearing.
I'll go ahead and meet you, and we'll wait until that time.
Sounds good.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is $832,314.63 for regular payables. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain the motion that the consent calendar be approved?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded. This will be your call vote.
Councilwoman Rule? Councilman Groth?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Aspero?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
And the consent calendar is approved. The first item on our old business this evening is a COVID-19 update from City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My briefing on this issue is brief tonight, which I know will be a welcome change for people. We are still in the process of finalizing our procedures for youth recreation, which was allowed under Phase One. We're waiting for some additional clarification and guidance from public health officials and the governor's office on that. And we do have another call scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. So, we anticipate having the procedures out before the end of this week, and along with that, then youth recreation being able to resume on city fields and areas beginning next week. Protocols for Phase Two reopening were released yesterday afternoon. We will have those up on our website today. So that includes indoor gyms and recreational facilities, other businesses under Phase Two, close contact services, and restaurants. One area that we've been seeking clarification on, and I have a scheduled call tomorrow with public health on this, is related to outdoor seating at restaurants. Specifically for us at the city, we have a number of businesses or restaurants in the downtown area that like to have their outdoor seating area and need permits from the city for that. And all of the guidance that we've received to date references indoor seating and guidelines in indoor areas. And so, we could assume what would apply to an outdoor area, but we don't want to be more restrictive. We want to be in compliance. So, I should have guidance on that tomorrow afternoon, and then we'll be able to provide definitive response on what we're doing with any permitting for outside seating. And finally, I wanted to bring up a discussion item for council this evening related to the meeting schedule. So, since the COVID pandemic really surfaced beginning in March and stay-at-home orders began to come down, we've been meeting on a weekly basis. And our recommendation to council at this time, staff recommendation, would be going back to our semi-monthly regular meeting schedule, particularly so we don't reach the point of meeting exhaustion. We're in the process of preparing our budget for council for next fiscal year, and we may need to take as much time as possible in finalizing that, so we know as much as possible relative to our revenues and impacts for next year. And so, we might, going into the summer, this is my advance warning, we might possibly have a few weeks of weekly meetings in order for us to effectively cover all of the budget questions and presentation with council. So you might want a break prior to that occurring in July from the weekly meetings. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to seek council direction in that regard, that's what we'll do moving forward.
Great, thank you. Is council in agreement with that change in schedule back to the normal?
Absolutely.
Consensus there? Great. All right, we're all on the same page.
So what our next meeting be?
Our next meeting will be two weeks from today.
Okay. Yes, May 20th.
May 20th.
Great. And it certainly is great to have you all back in the dais, with the exception of you, Councilwoman Rule, but it's a pleasure to have council back here and be here with staff. It's good to see you all. Glad everybody's healthy. The first item on our new business this evening is a public hearing and decision on appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision on March 3, 2020, to approve PCUP 20-0001, the Ridge 20-unit multifamily development on Cedar Street. Please note that a previous request by the same applicant in 2019, CUP 19-01, for a portion of the same site was withdrawn. This hearing is for a new and independent application. Just a reminder, as mentioned at the top of the meeting, those participating remotely are muted unless speaking. This is to ensure clean audio recording and preservation of the record. If you registered to speak, you will be called upon at the appropriate time. So this is a quasi-judicial public hearing. Therefore, at this time, I will ask that council members disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte contact regarding this issue. Does council have any such issue or disclosure? None? Okay. To provide testimony during the public hearing, an online registration form must first be submitted. As mentioned previously, the form can be found by visiting the meetings page on the city website at sandpointidaho.gov. In order of the public, the order of the public hearing will proceed as follows. One, explanation of the subject of the hearing by city staff. Two, presentation by the applicant. Three, opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. The order for those providing testimony will be as follows. First, those opposed. Second, those neutral. And third, those in favor. Rebuttal test, number four, rebuttal testimony from applicant. If new facts are elicited, the public must give an opportunity to comment on any new facts. Five, close the public hearing. And six, city council deliberates. No new information may be provided at this time, and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberations. Planning and Community Development Director Erin Qualls will now provide a presentation. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just give a kind of brief overview. The Planning Commission held a public hearing, March 3. For the Ridge Development, a 20-unit multifamily development site, residential multifamily zone. Any conditional use permit, any multifamily development, eight units or more triggers a conditional use permit. That is, we accepted the application and brought it to the Planning Commission. We noticed public hearing. The Planning Commission approved the development with six conditions. There's a packet for this evening, and a four to vote with one commissioner. March 17, the city clerk received the notice of appeal included in your packet. In the, oh, sorry, within the 10-day timeframe for appeals per our city code on appeals. So, essentially, tonight, you are tasked with deciding whether or not the Planning Commission made an error based on the claims in the appeal notice for the state, whether or not the element is in conflict with the plan or in conflict with city code. Appeals Code states that the same process that the Planning Commission held, a public hearing, which also has been duly noticed, with the same procedures spelled out as the Planning Commission provided for should be adhered to tonight. I think we have some additional comments that were not in your packet that may be read into the record, which I don't want to do that at this point. Other than that, I don't have anything to add at this point, unless there are any questions from...
Council, any questions? Okay, I think next we should, before any comments, we should have the presentation by the applicant. Is applicant with us in some way, shape, or form this evening?
Yes, the applicant will be attending remotely. Of all the exhibits, play as
Mr. Mayor, may I make one comment?
Yep.
Just for clarity of record, there were some submissions after the expiration date of the timeline for submission of exhibits, and they were all brought to myself, and the applicant was given an opportunity to determine whether they wanted to proceed this evening or to have this hearing moved to a later date, given the lateness of the submission, and the applicant chose to go forward. So everybody's due process opportunities were preserved.
Thank you, I appreciate you mentioning that.
The applicant's representative, Mr. Butler.
Mr. Butler has been promoted to panelist, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
He is now unputed.
Okay. Mr. Butler, floor is yours.
Hello. Is my video coming through, or was I supposed to hit something different?
We don't see any video, but we can hear you fine.
Let's try that. There we go.
Here we go, okay.
Very good. Well, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of my clients in this appeal to our approved conditional use permit for the Ridge. It's a multifamily development to be located between Cedar and Oak Streets, east of North Lincoln Avenue. Would we be able to show the site plan of my development?
Yes. Are you asking for the aerial or just the site plan?
Just my site plan submission. That might make it easier to describe.
Should be up now.
Yep. So now I've got to get, I've got to do some housekeeping here to get my notes where I can see them.
Is it possible to zoom on that a little bit, Erin?
Okay, I think that's...
Presenter mode.
Well, I think that's enough for me to just kind of share a couple thoughts. So, this is the second time we've come before the city council for this project, but since our previous submittal, we looked at additional opportunities to help address public concerns and incorporated two additional lots into the overall development. The additional lots gave us an opportunity to provide vehicular access to Oak Street in addition to Cedar Street, as well as pedestrian access connecting Cedar Street, which has limited sidewalks and pedestrian infrastructure, to Oak Street that has improved sidewalks all the way to North Division Avenue. We also tried to address our building scale by creating six buildings with three to four units per building, smaller footprints, and 25 to 30-foot minimum open space between buildings, rather than our previous proposal of 15 units, which were located in two buildings separated by less than 10 feet. In addition, our earlier proposal provided 1.6 parking spaces per unit, where this proposal allows for 2.15 spaces per unit. So at this time, I would like to directly respond to the items outlined in the notice of appeal. Please feel free to ask questions if you need further clarification during my comments. Could you please call up the appellant's notice of appeal?
Yes.
And I don't know if there's the ability to highlight, but I'm just gonna try to address by the paragraphs. In paragraph two, they state the overly aggressive nature of this proposal is in direct conflict with goals, intents, and objectives within the Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan and the land use laws within Sandpoint City Code. In response to what they deem the overly aggressive nature of this proposal, I would like to just share that under the zoning guidelines, this project allows up to 28 units with 28 required parking spaces. I was actually able to create a plan that met these densities, but the owners opted for a less aggressive development, and we are proposing 20 units with up to 43 parking spaces on site. In paragraph three, the next paragraph, they state that the permitting of the structures outside of code requirements in terms of scale, bulk, density, and compatibility would bypass ordinances specifically intended to protect traditional neighborhoods. My response to that is, under Chapter Four of the Sandpoint City Code, Section 9423, which is the development standards, and specifically Paragraph C lot coverage, it outlines the purpose of, I quote, "The building coverage standards, together with the height and setback standards, control the overall bulk of structures. They are intended to assure the taller buildings will not have such a large footprint, and that their total bulk will overwhelm adjacent houses. Additionally, the standards help define the character of the different zones by limiting the amount of buildings allowed on a site." So we are compliant with these standards and additional zoning requirements in our approved conditional use permit. Paragraph four, the first sentence, they say furthermore, "Our rights for construction, for the construction of a safe street infrastructure to accommodate this added development are not being addressed." I'm not equipped to address street infrastructure, but I can address some items that the appellant's reference in addition to this. So they reference 147 average daily vehicle trips will be generated. This information was provided in a traffic report we had developed by consulting engineers for the planning department. This study goes on to outline that peak traffic is anticipated to generate between 10 and 12 trips during the morning and evening peak hours. And with our current plan, those 10 to 12 trips would be split up between, or have the opportunity to be split up between two separate streets. So that's five to six street trips during peak hours. They went on to say vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle traffic through a deteriorating 18-foot wide street section without sidewalks is steadily increasing. We heard these concerns in our previous proposal, and in addition to the required sidewalk improvements along Cedar and Oak Streets, we proposed a pedestrian link along the West property line between Cedar and Oak that will be open to the community, allowing safe access to Oak Street sidewalks that are improved all the way to Division Street. In the next paragraph, paragraph five, I think it's the second sentence there, "Many areas exist where similar size and scale projects would be permitted outright by code." We're in agreement with this statement. This is, in fact, one of those areas, and that is why my clients performed their due diligence and invested in this property for development. This project is located in RM zoning, which allows for multifamily units, and when a development is eight units or more, it is required to go through a conditional use process. We have met the guidelines of density, street frontage, height requirements, building setbacks, building footprint, impervious surface, street facades, utility and trash screening, bicycle storage, landscape requirements, neighborhood scale, facade articulation, architectural detail requirements, and wall and fence requirements. And as such, we were granted a conditional use permit for this project. A reoccurring complaint by the applicants, or by the appellant's, is that we do not meet the guidelines for size, scale, and bulk. Again, these are regulated by the development standards of Section 9423 in Sandpoint City Code, which we have been approved. I would like to take this time to show a couple examples of other acceptable development guidelines in the RM zone. Could you please call up my exhibit called Elevation Comparisons, Cedar Street? What I'm going to show in the next two examples are elevations on both Cedar and Oak Street that show what our planned development is looking like, and then what is also allowed in an RM zone with no public input. So once they come up, I'll discuss that a little bit more. As you can see, this is a representation of Cedar Street, and you'll see there, on the top example, is our proposed multifamily development. It meets the zoning requirements, showing the step-up requirements with adjacent structures, and is within the 40-foot maximum allowable development.
And Mr. Butler, that's the one in the middle?
That's the top one.
The second one in?
The top one.
In the middle? Oh, yeah, but there's the single-family homes, then there's a larger development, and then there's a large development.
Yes. So basically, and I know it's hard without being able to call them all up, but we had two fourplexes. So on Lot One and Lot Two that I'm showing, and those step up from a story and a half to a two-story maximum. And then, on the west end of the property, which is Lots Three and Four, we have a stepping structure that goes from one story to two-story to three-story at the maximum. So just for an example, go ahead.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. So just as an example, the next image down shows what is allowed as far as single-family development with no public comment. This zone allows for a 40-foot maximum structure, and with minimum setbacks, and this could be done by even existing property owners to their own property. There's nothing restricting them from doing that, and under this kind of regulation with a single-family home, there would be no public input for this. The bottom example, I don't, yeah, there we go. The bottom example is another, I just wanted to show as another comparison of what's allowed in this zone without any public comment, which is a multifamily development, three units or less, that are accommodated, that meet the requirements on, in this case, a double lot. If we could go to the Oak Street elevation comparison, I'd just like to show that as another example, reiterating these same items. So as much as there is a concern of, you know, of us developing something to this height, this zone already allows this kind of development, and the only reason that there is public input on this is because we had to go through the CUP process, because we're providing eight units or more. So this is just a reiteration of the same kind of thing, showing it from our other street frontage with our proposed multifamily development on top. The second example shows what single-family housing could be developed to, and the bottom would show what a multifamily, three units or less, could be developed to, and both of those second and third examples do not need any public input.
Could you scroll down, Ron? Karen, thanks.
So after I'm done presenting, you will see on the appellant's presentation a map representing single-family homes in the area of our proposed development. Would there, I'm pretty sure, I don't need their map, but I'm pretty sure there is a map in the presentation that just shows an overview of the site, the city map. Yeah, that's what we're looking for. Is, can you scroll up a little bit where Oak Street is at the bottom of the map? So go the other direction. There we go. Little bit more.
That's as far as I can go.
Okay. Well, what you're gonna see in the app, the appellant's presentation is, they've highlighted the number of single-family homes north of our development, and the majority of the houses in development in that area is single-family homes, and a number of those are just single-story. But what I wanted to show, and I don't know if we can scroll the other direction, but it seems like we're maybe a little limited in what we can show, but in the same amount of area as what they're showing to the north, if we showed that same amount of area to the south, you would see numerous apartment complexes, including Northwoods Terrace on Oak Street, Oak Street Apartments, Bristol Cone Apartments on Pine Street, Sandpoint Vacation Condos on Pine Street, and Alpine Vista Senior Apartments on Pine Street. And I have included a picture of the Alpine Vista And I have included a picture of the Alpine Vista Senior Apartment. If, if you have the ability to call that up as my, one of my final exhibits. Neighborhood multifamily, yeah, that one. So, so there, again, that is an acceptable building type in this zoning. And literally in the same block area of what they're representing the neighborhood as all single-family, there are, there are projects of this scope that should be considered also in the fabric of this entire zone. The, the final exhibit I wanted to show today, I had not included, I don't know, Erin, you said that we had to ask for permission to show up, but it was a comparison of the photo that I did.
Mayor, if the council approves, there is an additional applicant you'd like to present?
Konda?
I have no problem with that, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
So what you're looking at here is, if you scroll to the top of that image first, or, or maybe you have it split over to two images. Yeah, so that's, that's, um, this is a photograph the appellant has at the beginning of their presentation that I wanted to take and superimpose what our development would, how it would fit into a view like this. So the second image shows our, our structures in there and just shows how it relates for scale and just kind of gets a feel for how it would fit into a neighborhood of this, of this figure. And I just wanted to just kind of show that. I, I think that's a good representation of the maximum because those are the largest structures on there. You can't even see the two-story structures behind these houses. And really, you just kind of see the rooftops when you're looking behind the existing houses shown right there. So in, in summary, my understanding of this process that's under consideration tonight is, is summed up in a single sentence for me, which is zoning code is the means in which to implement a comprehensive plan. This procedure is outlined in Idaho State Statutes, Title 67 of the State Government and State Affairs, Chapter 65 Local Land Use and Planning. It has sections that outline the comprehensive planning process, the approval of that process, and the, the zoning ordinances in, in which are the, the rules that we use to enforce and, and meet those obligations of the comprehensive plan. I, I wanted to just acknowledge one thing in the comprehensive plan as I was reviewing it, which outlines housing and neighborhoods, and it has three headings in it. The first heading says diverse housing for a diverse community. And my understanding of that is the goal is to encourage a wide range of housing in the community. This is achieved through planning and zoning districts such as the RM zone of which we're located in. The second heading is mixed-use options, which really don't apply to this project. And the third heading under housing and neighborhoods is beauty and character. And the goal is to enhance the overall beauty and character of the town's built environment. This is achieved through planning and zoning codes that not only address density, bulk, and scale, but in this specific category, require additional facade articulation guidelines and architectural detail requirements. By meeting and in many cases surpassing the, the requirements laid out in the zoning regulations, I feel we are in compliance with the comprehensive code. And that is why our conditional use permit was approved by the planning board. Thank you for your time. I will save any closing comments for rebuttal. And I just open up to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Butler. Does counsel have any questions for the applicant? No? Okay, thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
So we will now proceed with public comments. I'd like to start off, actually, let's start with those online, if we can, Melissa. I'd like to start with those opposed.
Okay. Mary Feldman? I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you, Mary.
Hi, thanks. Mary Feldman, I am owner and resident at 1708 Oak Street, which is three doors down from the claimant's house. I sent a letter, it should be in your packets. And with that, there was a picture of the view from my back deck, which has lovely view of the mountain range behind us. And Mr. Butler actually used, I'd like to, if we could pull up the photo that he used, which was in our appeal, where he transposed his buildings behind the houses, if we could show that? Right, so this is, I won't go into what's in my letter. I hope that you had time to read it and could appreciate it. But I do want to say, this is exactly what, I bought this house for that view. And if you look, all those houses there in front of the proposed development will now have no view of the mountains because those buildings are so high. Those lights from all of those apartments are going to shine down into our homes. And it's taking away our appreciation of the natural beauty and surroundings that we love here in Sandpoint. I understand that we need more housing, and I'm not opposed to two-story or less. But three-story is excessive. I don't believe it fits in with the neighborhood, nor the idea of our comprehensive plan was to bring neighborhoods, locals, businesses, and developers together. This is not bringing us together. This is basically blocking out our view and saying, nope, we can do this because the zone says so. Just because it's zoned that way does not make it right. I think that, I would, I really hope that the council will consider this and bring down the scale and bulk of these buildings. We understand that they're going to be built, but please consider the neighborhood. And this will set precedent for the rest of Sandpoint going forward. Please think on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Feldman. Appreciate your comments. I would ask the, all the speakers to limit their comments to three minutes or less, please. And please do not repeat prior comments, but just state your support or objection to those comments. Thank you. Next speaker is?
Janine Russell.
Ms. Russell, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine.
I, I wrote a letter and I was deciding not to speak at the meeting, but instead I just hope that Mr. Mayor and counsel received all of our neighborhood letters, which, one of them is mine.
Okay, would you like to say your comments now, or? Let me see if I have it here.
I didn't plan on reading or speaking. I just have a letter that was written and submitted last week.
It's not in my pile of letters to read?
Mr. Mayor?
Into the record, yeah.
Ms. Russell's comments are included in the packet.
In the packet, thank you.
She has a letter in the
Okay, we have your comments included in the packet. Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is?
I believe that's all we have who signed up to speak, aside from the appellant's representative, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Hello?
I will not. Hello?
This is Janine. My husband, Tom Russell, should have been on the agenda to speak.
He is. I don't see him sign in. Is he going to use your account, Ms. Russell?
Oh, that's why, yes. He's right here.
Okay. Mr. Russell, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and thanks for taking the time to hear our concerns. I, I read through all the letters that were submitted on this matter last night. And there was one recurring message that I saw in virtually every one of those letters. Nobody's opposed to reasonable density development, but this project is beyond reasonable. Everybody agrees that we need more housing, but not if it looks like this project. Just out of curiosity, yesterday we went and rode our bikes around the Milltown Apartments. I'd never really looked at them closely, and my impression from far away was that they were super densely packed. When I got there, I found just the opposite. The spaces between them were really generous. The drive aisles were wide, and the vehicle maneuvering spaces were more than adequate. There was a good amount of green space and nice landscaping. Then I looked at the Ridge Site Plan, and it became even more clear how ridiculously dense it is. Mr. Mayor, in a previous appeal hearing, you gave us an inspirational monologue with a tough-love message that change is painful and that development like this is what Sandpoint needs to solve our housing challenges. I agree with the spirit of your message, but I believe you're looking at this from the 30,000-foot level rather than focusing in on the individual merits or lack thereof of this project. Development of this sort is such an asset to our town and so badly needed. Where are all the champions of it? I didn't see a single comment supporting it. Your constituents have spoken loud and clear on numerous occasions. We're not okay with this level of density here or in any residential area. And we aren't an anomaly. If this was proposed in any residential area in this town, I'm confident the response would be the same. One of your planning commission members admitted as much. Are we all misguided and naive about what's good for us in our town? I don't think so. And to the city council, I'm appealing to you to think hard about who you're representing, the hard-working people of Sandpoint who have chosen to live here for the quality of life or remote business interests who drop in to exploit vulnerabilities in our code for their own selfish interests. I know this isn't an easy decision, and I don't envy your position. I'm asking you to do right by your neighbors and the people who elected you and that you represent. Please ask these developers to come back with a reasonable and respectful proposal for this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell, for those comments. Is there anyone else online that would like to speak in opposition to the project?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would ask that if Sarah Schmidt is attending, if you would raise your hand on your computer or press star nine on your phone. Ms. Schmidt does not appear to be in, in attendance, but it looks like Dean Allen would like to speak.
Okay. Ms. Allen, are you with us? We can't hear you, Ms. Allen. Are you there?
Okay, there she goes. Are you, are you there? Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now. We can hear you fine.
It was not me that wanted to speak. It was Sarah Schmidt, and she is here at my house.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Well, we're ready for her now.
Okay, I'm Sarah Schmidt. I'm at 1707 Cedar Street. I did send my letter. I would just like to see a design that would have no three-story buildings. I would like to see no parking lots and no visible waste management bins. And just one that would better fit the scale of this neighborhood and the charm and the character of Sandpoint. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Anyone else online who would like to speak in opposition to the proposal? Okay, seeing none, I have some letters to read into the record. These are all those opposed to the project as well. This is from Casey Martin, who lives at 418 Willow Drive.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
On those, just what is highlighted are the comments that they've made.
Thank you. So this person is opposed to the project. Sean Martin, also at 418 Willow Drive, is also opposed, opposed to the development. Karine Pierce at 1710 Oak Street is opposed to this development because of the three-story design max should be two-story in this single-story neighborhood. Derwin Pierce at 1710 Oak Street is opposed to this development. Each committee member said at the last meeting that they would be opposed to it as well, as well if they lived in our neighborhood. Logan Sanborn at 1718 Cedar Street says that he is also opposed to this project, this development. And lastly, we have a letter from Steve Hoops in Sandpoint, Idaho, who says, "It is glaring, glaringly apparent that affordable housing is needed for a building, for a bulging community. There is a proposal to build multi-story apartments at Madison and Cedar, as well as at Cedar and Lincoln, confusing that this areas, that this area would be suitable with a lack of infrastructure and access for proper maintenance to build beyond ergonomic feasibility. Plus, the economic issues and traffic congestion would not be sustainable. I understand the political and short-term financial gains for a few, but given the economic demands of these times, going forward makes no sense. So tabling and rethinking needs to happen." Collegies. And that concludes those opposed. Do we have anyone online that would like to speak, that has neutral comments?
Probably getting to it, but we do allow for the appellant's representative to be conducted during the opposed?
Yeah, I wanted to hear from the neutral because sometimes they sneak in some opposing comments.
Just wanted to make sure that wasn't going to fall off.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Do we have any neutral?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Would the, would the applicant like to, Mr. Butler, would you like to rebut any of those comments?
Mr. Mayor, we've not yet heard from the appellant's representative.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm with you.
There are still a couple more comments, I think, to be read. It's like we have someone raising their also supports.
Yeah. Now we'll hear from the appellant's representative. Are you with us online? I am.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Could you please state your name and whether, whether you reside in the city of Sandpoint for the record, please?
Sure, my name is Francis Ogilvy, 417 Madison Street.
Thank you, Mr. Ogilvy. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I'm here representing myself and the appellant, Damon and Allison Turcock. And I have a little opening statement here to read. The reason for this hearing is to decide the legality "The reason for this hearing is to decide the legality of the CUP approval decision. It should not focus on topics outside of that one purpose. We will show you reasons why this decision was an error, and we are asking that it be denied. As this portion of your meeting is quasi-judicial, you as elected officials will be wearing a different hat. You won't be in the usual mold of legislators and policymakers, but judges. At issue is whether any existing city codes or comp plan objectives have been complied with or not been followed. Your deliberations should try to reflect this different mindset whenever possible. City code does not consider duplexes or triplexes as multifamily development. Residential multifamily design standards are applied after only eight units. This CUP is asking for 20." Mr. Butler's exhibits show what might be possible within current code. We have always acknowledged that potential, but they are only possibilities. As such, Mr. Butler's exhibit should have no bearing or influence on this proposal or over at the hearing outcome. They are useful, though, in demonstrating to Sandpoint residents the kind of incompatible housing issues that might be coming our way without co-changes. This hearing, as well as Mr. Butler's illustrations, should generate the kind of robust public input the city has been seeking for its housing issues. Mr. Butler's Pine Street exhibit is the same one from the last hearing, and again, the structures were built well in a comprehensive plan and are outside of our neighborhood area. Often during the process, the planning department has maintained that the comprehensive plan is merely a guiding document. The comp plan doesn't simply exist for guidance. The amount of tax dollars, public outreach, staff time, everything involved in this development go into creating the document with policies that inform and define city codes that follow. The document, quote, "considers previous and existing conditions, compatibility of land uses, trend, goals, and objectives that are intended to guide the day-to-day decisions of elected officials and local government staff." While much of it involves a vision for the future, it also identifies what residents want to maintain and protect, such as the look and feel of our small-town character, safe neighborhoods, compatible development, access to our beautiful surroundings, and the ability to continue enjoying them. As we go through these slides, please remember that by code, a conditional use must be in accordance with, which means agrees with, any specific objective in the comprehensive plan or any applicable section of city code. And we have it up there. Okay. Concerns. That conditional use permit is required due to the development's potentially incompatible nature with existing neighborhood and densities. The Ridge conflicts with goals and objectives of the city of Sandpoint's comprehensive plan. The Ridge does not comply with numerous Sandpoint city code ordinances. The Ridge development proposes out-of-scale heights, bulks, and densities that disrespect the built environment and character of our neighborhood area. Next slide, please. We're moving down. These two code sections.
Go ahead.
Okay, these two code sections that deal with the grant of conditional use permits. A conditional use permit may be granted if it is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. Second is, a conditional use must be harmonious and in accordance with the general objectives or with any specific objective of the comprehensive plan. These two code sections are not advisory. They are not merely guidance. These are Sandpoint city code sections. The Ridge multifamily development is in direct conflict with goals and objectives in the Sandpoint comprehensive plan, which we will show. Next one. Conflict one. The bulk mass and architecture of multifamily and single-family units should seamlessly integrate with one another, encouraging a balanced streetscape where no one structure or development dominates. If you look down in the picture, in the illustration, the top is the previous proposal from the developers. The middle one is the current one, and the bottom is an overlay of both of them. And as you can see, there's really not too much difference between the two of them, except that the three-story is higher, and the fourplexes are a little bit higher as well. With these conflicts, the top part is the comprehensive plan objective, and the bottom part is the code section that supports it. These youth regulations are intended to create opportunities for new types of housing that seamlessly integrate with existing neighborhoods in the area. The Ridge family development does not seamlessly integrate with existing neighborhood. Conflict two: Require multifamily housing to respect neighborhood character. We'll have more on neighborhood character a little further down. Supporting ordinances will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate with existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character of the area. On the illustration at the bottom, the two houses, the one on the left in the white is the appellate's, Damon's. The one on the right is Jean Allen, who was the previous appellate. The darker gray sections here are fourplexes. And as you can see, those are compatible. Those are compatible with the neighborhood. They're compatible with the character of the neighborhood. The three stories here in black are not. You can see easily that they're not compatible in terms of bulk and scale. The proposed Ridge multifamily development does not respect the existing neighborhood and character. Move down one more. Conflict three. Are we there? Yeah. Edges between existing neighborhoods and areas of more intensity will be managed to ensure the transition between uses and housing types is smooth. And Mr. Butler's comments apparently says that this is a smooth transit. This is appropriate for our neighborhood. I can't believe that any resident in Sandpoint would say that that is smooth and that is appropriate. The supporting code is neighborhood scale. The scale of those buildings developed within an existing neighborhood shall conform to the established scale. We have an established scale in that neighborhood, and this is definitely not conform to it. The Ridge does not conform to the established neighborhood scale. Move down one more. This one's about density. This is a second. Density is measured by dwelling unit per acre, DU/acre. The Ridge is 21.95, let's say 22, dwelling units per acre. Norwood Terrace, which is across the street, is 22% lower density than the Ridge and is on property twice its size. Pine Meadow. Let me get this back up again. I lost it. Technical difficulties here. Pine Meadow is the one behind Norwood Terrace, and it's glory. And it's 61% lower density than the Ridge. Oak Street Apartments are 57% lower density than the Ridge. And these are all in our area, in the area of our neighborhood. The proposed Ridge multifamily development does not conform to the established neighborhood density. We have a response here to Mr. Butler's comments. In the P&amp;Z hearing, he said, "You know, they keep coming back to this is inappropriate, but this is appropriate. This could be done on any parcel in the RM zone." Well, not this, not what this proposal is. This can't be done on any parcel in the RM zone. It's not the case of meeting the requirements of zoning they're in. It's a case of meeting all the applicable requirements. In this case, it's an existing neighborhood, and a multifamily development must meet the required protections afforded existing neighborhoods by law. In the middle, so the opposition to the CUP said that in their cover letter that we grossly failed to meet the spirit in Letter of Chapter 9 zoning code. They commonly referred to the spirit and tenet of the code, yet they have failed to give any clear reason for denial of the CUP. We provided clear reasons. They were given it all in the hearings in each of the previous meetings. The problem was they were just largely ignored and not discussed. Our reasoning included noncompliance with the comp plan, goals and objectives, and city ordinances. The bottom comment, I take exception to comments that they say we're overdeveloping this land. The bulk building height and density of the proposed development is all size to maximize the development at the expense of surrounding neighborhood property owners. They are overdeveloping this land. The next is images. Again, goodies and incompatibilities of this development. This house would be on the top, Damon's house, the appellate. This would be his backyard. He would be losing... He would be losing privacy. He would be losing sunlight at about 4 o'clock in the afternoon as these block. The ones to the left show the Cedar Street view. And again, you can see the disparity. And below that, it adds on the houses across the street from the development, which are all single-family, single-story. And it shows how much these are out of character within that neighborhood. The one to the right, the bottom one, shows a cross-section of the block the way it is right now. The one in the middle adds in the two fourplexes. And as you can see, they're compatible with the neighborhood. They're not overly tall or overly bulky. But the third one on the top shows the striking difference between the two and the three-story. It is looming over the yards of these two houses. Next one. This is one that deals with neighborhood character. As Mr. Butler pointed out, all the lots with a little red dot on them are single-family, single-home lots. In fact, almost this entire area is single-family homes. Exception are multifamily here, two-story. Multifamily here, one-story. Multifamily here, two-story. The things that make up the distinctive qualities, it is primarily one-story. All the residential are two-stories or less. It is primarily single-family, as the staff report stated. Its density per dwelling unit is significantly lower than the Ridge development. Next one, please. This is a closer look at the development here, the Ridge. All the yellow houses are single-story, single-family. The blue are two-story. And I just think it's worth noting the amount of open space with all the green area. I didn't measure out the dimensions of all these houses, but I think you can get the idea of how this is for this neighborhood and how out of character it is. I don't know how you could get in with this the way it is. I don't think you could possibly get in enough impervious surface for code, but they say they have. The waiver that they got would have wiped out most of this parking area here with a grass area. But in order for him to get everything that he wanted to get in here, he had to get waivers, and there's still a number of things that have to be worked out that haven't been worked out. Next one. This one shows that homes adjacent to the proposal in purple. There are five single-story, single-family homes. All the red are the same. Again, two-story. There is the blue across the street that is two-story, the multifamily. Now, we are asking for a motion to deny, and we've provided these findings of fact. These are direct conflicts with the comprehensive plan. I'm going to read them once again. "Requiring multifamily housing to respect neighborhood character. Bulk mass and architecture of multifamily and single-family units should seamlessly integrate with one another, encouraging a balanced streetscape where no one structure or development dominates. A balanced streetscape where no one structure or development dominates." Complimentary. One is ensuring that the bulk mass or scale of an individual development does not dominate a street. Protect and enhance the charm and comfort of Sandpoint's existing neighborhoods. Mr. Butler actually said at the last hearing, he said that this proposal enhances the charm and comfort of the neighborhood. I'll leave that up to everyone to judge for themselves. Encourage increased density while requiring multifamily housing to respect neighborhood character. Development shall occur with a safe, appropriate street system and a network that provides easy access but does not allow rapid or high-volume traffic. The keys to this one are safe. We already have gone over all the problems with Cedar Street. All the conditions, 18-foot wood, the amount of traffic, the vista trucks. The number of people. With all the development that we've had in the neighborhood in the last couple of years, with 27 new homes, we've got a lot more pedestrian traffic using this street, and it's very unsafe. It's a very unsafe street, and it's getting worse. And what we're contemplating here is putting 47 more cars on there. And as far as Oak Street goes, this street going through Oak Street, all that's doing is taking one problem with Cedar Street and making it two, Cedar Street and Oak Street. Oak Street already has major, major parking problems. There is parking on the south side of Oak Street all summer long because of the multifamily development there in their RVs and their other vehicles are parked there all the time. With this now and with these companion garages, I'm not sure what that... I can't remember the word for it. With one car parked behind the other, one of those cars is going to end up parked outside in the streets, so people won't have to move the other car every time they want to get out and go somewhere. So it will contribute to problems on Oak Street as well as Cedar Street. Ensure that the multifamily development respects the town's unique... Ensure that the multifamily development respects the town's unique historic character and architecture, density and site plan. Okay. We're in the right one there? Conflicts with Sandpoint City Code? Yes. A conditional use granted to an applicant if the proposed use is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan. And we just showed you those conflicts. The conditional use must be harmonious and in accordance with the general objectives or with any specific objective of the comprehensive plan. The scale of those buildings developed within an existing neighborhood shall conform to the established scale. The overall height of the multifamily structure shall relate to that of adjacent structures by avoiding construction that greatly varies in height from adjacent buildings. We showed you that adjacent homes to the and there is significant variance in height. Will not be serving to existing neighboring uses. The primary entrance of the building should be on the front elevation and shall face the street. If you look on the site plan, you'll see that there are six buildings, three of them have building entrances on the, on the front elevation and face the street, three of them don't. But we hope that we've made a clear case to you that this proposal and design is grossly unsuited to its existing neighborhood location by virtue of lack of seamless integration. The nonconformance to the established scale and character. The inappropriate and harmonious nature of the design. The disrespect shown to neighboring property owners and the failure to meet and comply with all objectives, city codes and standards. We have not gone into the many procedural errors and missing elements of this permit application. We have chosen to highlight the most obvious and egregious conflicts regarding the legal requirements it has ignored. To quote my letter to you. And since we're mentioning letters, I hope that all of you have had a chance to read all the letters that have been sent in in a proposal in opposition to this proposal. I believe we had 21. And because of the situation we're in, we don't have the opportunity to come out and force like we have in the past to show how many people are opposed to this development. Because of this webinar thing, it's it doesn't have the impact, but I want you to know that there is a large number of people that are still very much, very much opposed of this and, and very emotional in their, in their opposition. This is what we have requested from the beginning with the Ridge, a multifamily development that blends well with the neighborhood and respects its character. One that will become an asset and enhance its comfort and neighborly feel. One that will not jeopardize the safety of our street or overly burden current infrastructure. One that complements our neighborhood scale. One that protects our personal property investment. Which is, is a very important one. One that protects our personal property investment. One that allows us to continue enjoying the beauty that surrounds us. How are we doing on time there?
Can you wrap it up here shortly, Mr. Ogilvy?
How much time do I have?
How about three minutes?
Can you put up exhibit 14? City zoning map. Great. I can't get this thing off of my screen. Okay, this is, this is the city zoning map. I can't see it, but you'll notice that all the turquoise areas are multifamily. All of the white area is single family, those are the two major resident, excuse me, residential zones. And as you'll notice, there are no buffer zones as in most smaller cities and large cities. There normally you have a buffer zone to avoid this, this kind of incompatibility. So that you can gradually increase density into different areas. But the way Sandpoint has this, every little, every little line that you see that between the turquoise and the, and the white is another example of where a three-story developments like this could go up. And then they could go up anywhere in the city within, with any of that turquoise area, that's half the city. So if you can imagine, if you can, if you can imagine allowing that kind of development, what, how that would change the character of our city. I'd like you to consider that and think about that and, and how that would affect the future of our city. And with that, I thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for allowing us the opportunity to voice our concern.
Thank you, Mr. Ogilvy, appreciate those comments. Okay. We will now hear rebuttal from Mr. Eric.
There were a couple of other, correct me if I'm wrong. Written comments submitted or people wishing to speak.
We have in favor, which we haven't got to yet.
Yeah.
We still have in favor to go through.
Right, so you want, you want to do that before the rebuttal?
Okay. Okay.
So we have Mr. Mayor, one person on the phone, I believe would like to speak.
Okay.
Jennifer Anderson, if you want to unmute your microphone, you have the floor.
I live drive and affected property owner in regards to the use permit, and I just would like to offer these follow, these thoughts. I love this I plan except in my neighborhood.
Ms. Anderson? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
We do have Ms. Anderson's comments written, if you would like to read them.
Okay.
Ms. Anderson? You're breaking up, we're going to go ahead and read your comments, we do have those, if that will suffice.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Do you want me to read them?
Please.
This is stated May 6, 2020, from Jennifer Anderson, who's a resident of the city. In response to the appeal filed by Damian and Allison Turcot authored by Francis Ogilvy as an affected property owner, I offer the following thoughts. I like this project, I like this plan, I'll accept this development in my neighborhood. According to city, Sandpoint city staff, the project conforms to current building codes and the comprehensive plan by comfortable margins regarding density and other constraints. This project plan has been approved by the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission. Please join their consensus and approve this project to advance. Remember, there are many control measures along the way from here on out to ensure this project turns out to be a positive for the city. The most important frontline resource we have is the dedicated staff who support the elected officials who have brought it this far in a very scripted process. Please vote to approve this project. My comments are meant to be succinct while following the general order of the appeal document. I believe that each of you has spent at least as much time studying this appeal as have I, so thank you for considering my comments, I hope they are meaningful. On page one, paragraph four, the points regarding street infrastructure and trip load are not corroborated by city staff tasked with analyzing and reporting. In fact, it is stated in the permit documentation that existing street conditions will meet the additional load. Importantly, the location of the project allows for residents to use alternate transportation methods, walking, cycling and public transportation. Paragraph five, the notion that the city should group all higher density housing in one area of town is in direct opposition to the stated goals of incorporating diverse types of housing throughout Sandpoint. In paragraph six, in referring to smart growth policies, I say emphatically that this project is a gradual addition of higher density development. Paragraph seven, in this appeal, there are five goals listed for the comprehensive plan and at least five ordinances listed from the city code. Not all of these components involved in the decision can have the same weight or magnitude. And looking at the order in which they are listed, I assume the most important goal was listed first. Within the comprehensive plan, it includes the phrases to accommodate growth and encourage increased density. The stated purpose of applicable ordinances and city code which are cited in this appeal include the phrase to provide diversity in housing options. You as decision makers must choose the most significant goals and focus on achieving those that bring the most benefit to the city as a whole. The glossary section is helpful but incomplete, there are several omissions such as neighbor compromise and distinguishing. Finally, in this discussion, there are many references to existing neighborhoods specifically regarding charm, comfort, character and scale. Where is Sandpoint's working definition of neighborhood located? Is it a certain number of blocks or dwellings or people? If there isn't one, we are left to interpretation. Leveraging off the several references and the appeal to the fabric of traditional or existing neighborhoods, my personal sense of this existing neighborhood gravitates to patchwork quilt. I think this project will fit in seamlessly, please vote to approve, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for those comments, thank you for reading that, Melissa. Do we have anyone else online that would like to speak in favor of the proposal?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I have a few comments I'd like to read into the record. These are all letters that we received late in support of the project. One is from Brad Ebersson at 330 First Avenue, he is in support of this development. Kaitlin Jordan does not reside in Sandpoint city limits, is also in support of this development and opposes the appeal. Robert Jordan does not reside within Sandpoint city limits, is in support of this development and opposes the appeal, also adds, this neighborhood is zoned for multifamily, this is a case where single family has built in a multifamily area. Bill Dom does not reside within Sandpoint city limits. He is in support of this development and opposes the appeal and comments, good project that will go great with future plans for the city of Sandpoint in an already zoned multifamily area. And now we will hear rebuttal comments from Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler, the floor is yours, if you'd like to rebut.
It's on mute.
You're on mute, sir, we can't hear you.
Thank you.
There you go. You know, you just went back on. Hang on, hang on, we're still trying to get you, get your sound up here.
It myself, there.
There you go, we got you.
Okay, great. Well, in summary, I just want to say I feel we've demonstrated compliance with goals and with goals outlined in the comprehensive plan, including efficient land use, providing housing opportunities and increased density in context area three. Our planning is in compliance with the design standards outlined in the city code for the RM zone and has been approved by the planning commission. And as such, I feel the appeal of its approvals should be denied. I hope you will grant my clients the same opportunities afforded to every single property owner in this area at RM zone. Thank you once again for your time and consideration for the final approval of this conditional use permit.
All right, thank you, Mr. Butler. So we will now close the public hearing. And I will at this time, the council may deliberate. Any questions posed may only be directed to staff, I remind council. So at this point, does council have any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Maybe Fonda can speak to this or Erin, but there's, and we just saw in the, in the presentation by those that would like to appeal the decision that saying that it doesn't comply with, with various city code and is not in it's in conflict with the comp plan, and so I would just like a legal interpretation of, of those allegations.
Sure, so staff has done a thorough job going through this application to confirm that the application and what's being requested is in fact compliant with city code, first of all. Second of all, there is a big difference between this terminology of compliant with the comprehensive plan versus inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan is designed as a visionary guideline to manage growth over time. And the reason we're here today is because there's a difference of opinion between the applicant and the appellant as to whether or not this project is in fact consistent with the comprehensive plan. And that's why you are being asked to, in a quasi judicial forum, be the decision makers with regards to that dispute. So that's your job here today is for you to formulate an opinion as to whether or not you believe the project is or is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. But from a legal interpretation and having spent some time, go ahead. Sorry, yes, I agree with you, in conflict with, is not in conflict with. But as far as the city code, it's a different analysis and the staff has done a thorough job analyzing all of the elements of this project as it relates to city code.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that question, Councilwoman Williamson. And I would also ask our IDS Director Amanda Wilson to weigh in on the traffic impact side of that as well. Would you, would you concur that? Sorry to catch you by surprise there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so specifically, what would you like me to answer?
Well, it was suggested by the appellant that the, the traffic impact of this project, both on Oak and on Cedar, was too great for the infrastructure to, to handle. And I, and I assume, I know the applicant did a traffic study in their, in their, in their application. And that traffic study came back. The infrastructure meets the, the increased demand adequately, is that?
Yeah, so I, what I would add to that is clarify is the applicant actually had an engineer, transportation engineer, that what's called a trip generation and distribution letter. It is technically not a traffic study, nor does it meet the requirements of a full-fledged study. The trip generation letter, which essentially is looking at what would be the volume of trips generated as a result of this type of development did not meet the threshold of our code that would require a full traffic study. A full traffic study is what would determine if that volume of traffic would have an impact on the infrastructure. So we're not really, in my opinion, in a position to say yes or no, that volume of traffic is going to have an impact on the infrastructure or not. What I will say is that there is infrastructure in front of this proposed development and on the other side of it as well. We are in the middle of a transportation multimodal plan that includes a full pavement assessment that will have proposed improvements throughout our community. My personal opinion is that this street, Cedar Street is insufficient in its current state regardless of this development. I guess I would have to say it.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah.
Erin.
Counsel, any other questions for staff? Yep.
I have a question for you, Erin, just because I'm curious. So if someone wanted to, if the bridge had not applied, and I, as John Q. Public, wanted to put up a three-story house there on that lot, could I have done that?
Yes, we don't regulate by stories. We regulate by height. In a multifamily zone, the height is 40 feet. Step standards come in when it's a multifamily development, four units. So, yes, you could build a three-story house as long as it was within the 40-foot threshold. Single-family zone, the height limit is 35.
Would it have required a planning and zoning meeting, or...
No, no. That, the, a hearing, a conditional use permit is... It is beaten.
Thank you.
Erin, just to clarify, we wouldn't be hearing this at all without the rebuttal, correct?
Without the appeal.
Or without the appeal?
Yeah.
Okay.
A window, appeal window in code. I'll admit that requirement.
It simply just needs to be approved by planning and zoning, and they can proceed.
What's approved by planning and zoning. Decision tonight whether or not that.
One last question. Do you believe that our height allowances exceed standard code or statewide code? Are they consistent with other regions?
I, you know, I have not done an analysis statewide at varying height heights, but I would say whether it does or whether it doesn't is a great question to ask as we go through the comprehensive plan and subsequent zoning ordinance modification based on that. But what you're tasked with tonight is evaluating this application based on the current plan and current codes.
Ms. Councilwoman McAllister, if I may, carry on with what you said. Were you asking those questions in regards to, I believe we heard a lot about personal desires, which I completely understand of, the view of the mountains, sunlight, all of that, which I completely respect, and I believe we all appreciate and enjoy because that's one of the reasons we live here? Is that one of your concerns is, okay, say, this development doesn't get built, but a three-story doesn't, and it still has the same effect, negative effect, in their minds of taking away the view and the sunlight? Is that...
Yes.
So I understand. Thank you.
Yes.
And Erin, if I, or Amanda, maybe you, Erin, can you please explain to us why we have a planning and zoning commission?
So, okay.
The Land Use Planning Act requires you to.
Well, it doesn't require you to have a planning commission, but the purpose, planning commissions involve a turn of the century, and the idea of it was to take the politics, one of the ideas, take the politics out of land use decisions. It also helps to make it more citizen-oriented, more volunteer decisions made by volunteers within the, other than politicians.
Right.
It also helps to relieve you of workload that they take on, such as applications like this. If you do have a planning commission, the state statute requires that they are the, states, that they are the body that prepares long-range planning documents, such as the comprehensive plan.
Mm-hmm.
So that kind of in nutshell, this is kind of the purpose of a planning.
And one voted no, correct? Against?
Two voted no, four voted yes, one.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, counsel?
I'd like to make another comment. Sorry.
Okay.
So I find if I'm talking to my fellow council members, very similar to the airport situation, we had current law where, as the law, and then we had, well, what about the future? And we made that decision based on the current state of what is the legal, what is the legal requirements. But I feel like this is a little different because this is more of how we interpret the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
To deny, I would say to deny the application, you would have to find that it is in conflict with the plan, and if, if you like, I'm happy to answer any questions on any specific identified conflict points and provide, you know, the sections from which, you know, those snippets were pulled out and that were the basis for the appeal.
Right.
And so if you want, we can go over the sections entirely, if you want a better analysis of whether it's in conflict or not.
The key word, "in conflict," correct?
In conflict. That is, yes. That is essentially what you're tasked with deciding.
Yeah, thank you. I'm fine with it. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Erin, I think since that's ultimately what we're being tasked with, going over those points where there could be potential conflict with the existing comprehensive plan, for me personally, would be valuable.
Okay. There a specific conflict, or do you want me to...
I, if you could bring up the list where the appellant is asserting that there's conflict, that would be...
Sure.
Shannon, would you mind pulling your mic a little closer? You're a little bit hard to hear. Thank you.
Conflict number one, and maybe what I can do is, and at the advice of our attorney, I went ahead and prepared this ahead of time in anticipation of the question. Whoops, wrong one. Oh, you are seeing it. Sorry. Too many screens in front of me. So the, as Mr. Olbey stated, the first part here is a section of the comp plan. The second part is a section of code. And so just, just so you could better determine it, I, you know, wanted to make sure you're seeing it in context of where it's coming from, right? So bulk mass and architecture, multifamily and single-family unit should seamlessly integrate with one another, encourage a balanced streetscape, and know one structure or development dominates. That's mentioned in a couple areas in the plan. I think probably the most relevant is the context area three designation for this area. And this is the full description of context area three that development patterns increase the density of housing through the use of small lot sizes, smaller setbacks, options for shared open space, and the inclusion of attached and detached multifamily units, traditional grids, pattern, sidewalks, walkable proximity to services. And then the bulk mass and architecture, multifamily, and single-family should seamlessly integrate with one another. And then it goes on to kind of describe this general, like, larger area, which is, which is where this site is located, as the primary, is the primary designation. Code reference, there's an additional portion to the code reference. That's the purpose statement that was referenced in that conflict point. The second part of it says, "The regulations allow for a wider range of housing types compared to residential, single-family, in order to create denser neighborhood form." That's a code reference, and it's a purpose statement. It's not specific standard. Do you want me to go on to conflict two? Require multifamily housing to respect neighborhood character. The code section is actually, references is actually from our application standards that the applicant has to provide a narrative and address those things, which is, was completed and is part of your packet. I'm not going to detail on that. This particular section comes from policy A about efficient land use, goal, the goal LU1, efficient land use, in the land use section of our comp plan, really intended to provide for accommodating growth within the cities to prevent, to reduce the pressure to expand too much into the area of city impact, that, those areas outside into the hills. So the policy says to encourage increased density in CA3 and CA4 areas while requiring multifamily housing to respect neighborhood character, just so you have the full code section. And this is just the comprehensive plan section. This is the code section that references just the requirements of the application, and sections D, E, and G of the narrative statement does address that specific requirement. Conflict fleet, conflict number three, edges between existing neighborhoods and areas of more intensity will be managed to ensure the transition, transition between uses and housing types is smooth. Then, then we kind of get to the real standard of, the standard intended to, in code, to try to mitigate that, or try to accommodate that, comprehensive plan directive. So the comprehensive plan statement comes from housing section, and I've kind of included the basic paragraph, which starts off with saying, "The plan's goals will, however, put adapted pressures on existing single-family neighborhoods on-site, on-street parking may become more difficult. Edges between existing neighborhoods and areas of more intensity will be managed to ensure the transition between uses and housing types is smooth." And then the next sentence says, basically directs us how we're going to do that, and that's through regulations. Sandpoint must establish development regulations to do so. And then we're going to the actual development regulation, which the planning commission, we specifically called out for them to really look at this and really look at this provision of code, the step standards, that is 9423H6A. "The overall height of multifamily structure shall relate to that of the adjacent structures by avoiding construction, avoiding construction that varies greatly in height from adjacent buildings, new multifamily structures that graduate their maximum height, again, 40 feet, based on adjacent structures using stepped roofs and/or partial stories. For example, that portion of the multifamily, that portion of the multifamily structure instructed adjacent to single stories limited to one and a half stories." So that's the code section. Same charm and comfort, just so you have the full area, the full provision of where the charm and comfort was referenced from, and that's in goal H3, new neighborhoods, non-motorized connection between streets, encourage a variety of housing sizes. And yes, development shall occur with safe, appropriate street system and a network that provides easy access but does not allow rapid or high-volume traffic to disrupt the neighborhood. Neighborhood services, public open space and parks shall be connected with multimodal paths. And then our cul-de-sacs provision, intended to limit dead-end streets for connection, pedestrian connection at the very least, if they are allowed. And then this is the, and then the, I think also reference was that, "Ensure that all commercial, single, and multifamily development respect towns' unique historic character and architecture density in site planning." That is from our goal CD3, Community Design, goal one, Historic Town, retain Sandpoint's position, image as a historic town. I guess while I'm at it, I know that what was referenced, and Fonda already said that the code was met, but in the appeal, notice of appeal, I did want to point out, or did want to address, if I may, Mr. Mayor, the question of entrances oriented to the street. So the question was, you know, three buildings have entrances oriented to the street, whereas the others do not. So code does not require that a multifamily development be all one structure, and the, and it does not say the buildings. It says the building. So, and all the buildings that are on the street have been required to have entrances oriented to the street. So the, that, you know, so that, I guess that's all I wanted to say about that, just so it's on the record. That's how we interpret the code. The buildings on the street must front the street. It doesn't prohibit multiple, you know, breaking up the structure into smaller structures for multifamily development. The only other thing I had on here was the, I don't think it needs to be addressed, the question of inconsistent versus not in conflict. They are synonyms in the dictionary, so just for, just for the record. There was a question in the notice of appeal about the motion made by a planning commissioner.
Thank you, Erin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Williamson, was that, that made sure?
Yeah, that was helpful. Thank you.
Okay, standard there. Any further deliberation?
It was a mention of waivers. How many waivers were applied for, and then how many were granted?
Yeah, so not specifically mentioned in the notice of appeal, but there was one waiver granted, and that passed unanimously in its specific, there's a, within our multifamily development code, there is a provision that does allow for waivers to certain standards. Only one waiver for one specific standard was granted, having been found by the planning commission that the requirements were met, and it was specific to the distance from the building to the, one of the buildings, or two of the buildings, a fourplex, I believe it was, to the parking lot, which requires 15 feet. And in order to provide the, through connectivity through the block, that, that would have really rendered that possibility, you know, difficult or feasible, and that was, by recollect, the basis for the granting of that waiver.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to deny the request for, to oppose the project.
I'm about a motion to affirm the planning and zoning commission's decision.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to affirm the planning and zoning commission to approve...
How are we going to ask this question? Can you say that one more time? That made it more clear.
A motion to affirm the decision already made by the planning and zoning commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No, moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman Spira?
Working on it. I'll just express again some more of my feelings. You know, we live in a small, tight-knit community. A lot of us know each other, and we all appreciate our small-town feel, and also understand that things are changing, and I just want to express that I completely understand the applicant's desire to, with their own property, to build as they feel is compliant and not in conflict with the comprehensive plan, to build what they want to build. I have no problem with that. If it was said that for their own selfish interest, well, in this case, whether you want to build something, or you want to keep your own view, it's a selfish interest. And I'm not saying that's a bad selfish interest. It's just a self-interest. And so I want to respect the applicant, and that they believe they've done all they can to be approved, and with the planning and zoning commission that I feel has done a great job over the years, have guided us in a good way, I believe, and they've approved this, so I want to respect the applicant, and I also struggle because, as a member of this community, I understand why we live here, with the views, the sunshine, what we appreciate with that. Also, living in town, I understand that I am personally going to be limited to such things, having neighbors, tall trees, other buildings, and that's why I go out of the city to appreciate that more. So it is, I don't believe, an issue of selfishness here as much as self-interest, and not in a bad way for either, either parties, which makes this very difficult because I'm all about the freedom to do legally what you wish. about the freedom to do legally what you wish with your own property, but I also understand the desire to move somewhere with the appreciation of the natural beauty. So this makes it very difficult for me, and comes down to, for us as council members, again, is this in conflict with the comprehensive plan? And as I see it, the Planning and Zoning Commission does not feel that way, but it's coming down to us. And some thoughts on my head, in my head.
That all?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McAllister? Yes. Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilman Spuro?
Yes.
Councilman Groat?
No.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For clarification, that is an affirmation of the findings and the decision.
An affirmation of the findings and decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
I can give you the number, and that was decision for March 3, 2020, PCU 20-0001. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a proposed agreement for the 2020 Farmers Market. City Administrator Jennifer Stapleton will provide a presentation for us.
Actually, I'm going to hand this over to Mary Malone. She's our specialist. Any additional questions?
Okay, thank you, Mary.
While Mary is setting up, we also have the coordinator for the Farmers Market available tonight, too, to answer any questions.
Yeah, so I've been working with the Farmers Market Manager, Kelly. Questions? Yeah, so she had sent me a plan last month after, because I got the initial application back in February before any of this happened, and so last month, we started talking, and she sent me a plan after she had found some recommendations from Idaho Farmers Market Association and other area markets, and what they were doing with the COVID-19 situation, because they are essential, but a lot of them had established certain protocols and So this is what, the last version of what she had sent me to limit market, limit market vendors to essential businesses, so no hot food or crafters for the time being, have a new layout to encourage social distancing, vendors having a 10-by-10 space with a five-foot buffer between each one, hand washing stations, no samples, et cetera. So there's a list of stuff she had sent over, so we've been working together to try to kind of figure out how they could set that up. The initial, normally they're kind of, and it's actually on this map, you can see how they're, they're partially set up when this picture was taken. So they set up in Farmer, Farm and Park, and this section of Oak Street typically, and then they have a blockade right there. So the idea was to try to like move it out into the street and block off the street with the vendors lined up along the curb, and then have customers in the middle, so there would be an entrance on one end and an exit on the other, and they could count the number of customers coming in to, to increase that social distancing and try to kind of dissuade gathering too much. So the only problem with that is to have enough vendors and people to make it viable to have the market. They would need to close off an entire street some, somewhere downtown, the entire block, which would require closing off entrances to businesses, most of which have operations on Saturdays. So we ran into some issues with that. So yeah, after looking at all of the downtown streets, including our designated event areas, to do it every Saturday was just looking really tough to try and find a street that that would work on. So after talking with Jennifer and the other staff, we started looking at this portion of the city lot, where they could line up vendors on one side and vendors on the other, and have lots of room in the middle for customers, so they'd be able to have- So yeah, if they had, were able to set up in the, just the western section of the city lot, they would be, there's several reasons why that would be helpful, to be close to where they're normally at, so people kind of know where they're at. There'd be plenty of room to do the entrance on one and the exit on the other. And, yeah, so they'd have 16 vendors on one side, 16 on the other, with that 10-foot space each with a five-foot buffer between, so they would kind of create the buffers on the sides and funnel everybody into the entrance. Yeah, keeps them close to their original location, close to the bathrooms at Jeff Jones Town Square. It opens up Oak Street, which is normally closed on Saturdays. Oh, and that was another thing, they were suspending the Wednesday market until, so it would only be on Saturdays. So to open up Oak Street, which also has parking on it, obviously. And the vendors would not be able to park in the city lot, we put that in the agreement as well, as with normal, when they're in Farm and Park, they usually park over by the Army surplus anyway, so they would just park over there. So they would unload and unload in the city lot. Park over there, but, so there'd still be the two full sections, and it'd be from 7:30 to 2:30 on Saturdays, with the market hours nine to one, fair downtime.
And this would start when, Mary?
Um, I think we were looking at this Saturday, since they were already postponed. Are you-
Yeah, Kelly, if you're with us, please-
Yeah, I'm here. So we are planning to open May 16th, Saturday, May 16th, not this Saturday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next Saturday. Give us some time to- No parking, stuff.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The, I guess, final comments that I would note with this is really from the staff perspective, the appreciation to the Farmers Market for really doing a lot of, of research and considering how they could continue to operate the, the market, which is important to our community from an economic development standpoint, including to our businesses downtown with bringing people into the downtown, but considering the public health and safety recommendations from the CDC, best practices for Farmers Markets, for both community members coming into the Farmers Market as well as the vendors who are offering the goods at the Farmers Market. We fully recognize the impact, and we talk about parking downtown, as you all know, on a regular basis, and so landing at a location to keep the Farmers Market in the downtown, again, is a draw into our downtown, and really creating and supporting our downtown as a destination, was a challenge, as Mary said, with finding a good location. The city parking lot is, is not absolutely ideal because of its central location and availability to all of the businesses downtown for parking, but after sitting through the map and going through street after street, and Chief Kuhn was involved in this discussion, myself, Amanda was involved as well as, as Mary, where we finally ended up landing in terms of safety of people coming into the Farmers Market, trying to achieve the public safety measures, public health measures, that market was incorporating and ensuring that we could get it in a location where we wouldn't start to have traffic backing up and impacting access into parking lots for businesses. The downtown parking lot was really the only viable location for us to keep the Farmers Market in the downtown core.
Great, thank you for that addition. Any questions from-
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Kelly, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Awesome, thank you. Is there, well, why did you choose to suspend the Wednesday market? Is that because of lack of vendors, or?
No, until the state is fully opened back up again, we don't foresee, and talking with Mary and everyone else, that we don't foresee it being safe to be back in Farm and Park until we can meet without restrictions.
Okay, so if you wanted to do a Wednesday market with these same rules, it'd be safe for doing it Saturday but not Wednesday? Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I don't think that it would pass to close down the parking lot on a Wednesday. So basically, we need to be able to restrict and count the number of customers we have coming into a given space.
And staff, maybe you can help me with this. What's, is there a legal limit of how many people can be in an open space market?
The best, the, the standards, the best practice standards for the Farmers Market are 113 square feet per person, so they were, and that was guidance that they found from National Farmers Market Associations. So that's that six-foot radiant around a person, that's how you get to the 113 square feet. So for clarification, Councilman Spuro, I, I think for where you're getting with the questioning to, Farmers Market felt, in order to accommodate the public health recommendations from the CDC, the best practices from the National Farmers Market was, they needed to move out of the Farm and Park space while there were restrictions, restricted recommendations in place, and move onto the street. In order to accommodate that, with the space calculation that they determined they needed for the number of vendors they had, and for best practices and what they wanted to accomplish, that's where we landed at the location in the city parking lot. I believe their intention, and Kelly can verify this, is, for example, when we get to a stage four reopening, I believe their intention is to hopefully move back to the Farm and Park area again for Wednesday market, but again, that's with the release of restrictions and looking at like a stage four or beyond in terms of reopening. I think the other element for clarification for council members on this is, it was not the city that required the Farmers Market to relocate, it was the Farmers Market who felt, again, for best practices, and in order to, to meet the social distancing best practices, they needed to move out of Farm and Park. So we are willing to accommodate Farmers Market in the location that they desired, but moving out of there with the additional space considerations that they had, that's where we landed on the city parking lot, being able to accommodate their needs.
It was also in the initial, the suspended Wednesday market, so I guess we hadn't really done much.
Yeah, I mean, that came from the Farmers Market Association, I'm pleased to hear that, that the city is working with Farmers Market, not the city, forcing certain things, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Kelly, for joining us, and nice work in putting that plan together, doing all the research. Nice to have you down, staff, thanks. So is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have anybody specific who signed up, but if there's anybody who's still pending who would like to speak on this matter, they can raise their hand. We do have one. Ms. Anderson, you can go ahead and unmute your microphone.
Hello.
Hello, we can hear you.
We have a- Go.
Jennifer?
I just want to say all the, yes, sorry.
Um, as before, you're breaking up terribly, so we are, we're not catching what you're saying, I'm so sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, for your comments, sorry that we couldn't receive those, but we appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, let's see if we can get her on chat.
We have a chat feature as well, Mr. Mayor, so they can type in on chat, and if, if we can message her and let her know, and that gets typed in, then a city clerk can read that, those comments.
Great, so we'll just wait patiently for a moment.
I took my off mute, but my chat is disabled.
Oh, well, we can hear you now.
I have Verizon account now.
So-
Go ahead, Ms. Anderson.
I just applaud the effort to adapt, and I say bravo, and let's forge ahead.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that. Anyone else? No. Okay, with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the resolution for Farmers Market Agreement. Is there a motion?
No move.
Seconded.
And moved and seconded, is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Spuro?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Yes.
Councilman Groat?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
I'd just like to say, nice job to the staff and everybody involved in the market. I think it's great that we're going to keep that, yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Motion passes. The final item on the agenda this evening is the Treasurer's Quarterly Financial Report for Fiscal Year 2021, Second Quarter, ending March 30, 2020. Finance Director Sarah Lins will provide a brief presentation.
Good evening. So this is for the first, basically, half of this full year 19, or sorry, 20, and more full years from now. And so basically, 50% of our budget is, but that's where work, I'm going to do a presentation on half, 50% of our year. And at the very end, I'll go a little bit more into the COVID, and what we're projecting for the future of the year, and also a little bit of more learning from the state. So for the first half of the year, the, this is the general fund expenses, we're at 33% expended year-to-date. General fund expenditures, personnel is at 41.9% of the, through the second quarter, and maintenance and operations is at 35%, with capital projects at 21.7%. And that is typical of this time of the year, because we haven't, we hadn't started a lot of our projects, and we will do most of those in the third and fourth quarter. This is the wage and benefits trending for throughout, for the first and second quarter. You can see, the second quarter has, is a little bit lower than- You can see the second quarter has, is a little bit lower than last year and in prior years. That is due to us moving to a new pay period where we're 26 pay periods in the current, now in current year where we were at 24. That does have two extra pay periods. So depending on when those fall throughout the year is going to cause us to be a little bit up or down at the end of the quarter. MNO is right on track for what it was last year and prior years. And all, 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 all expense trending is down a little bit and that is due to the personnel expenses. Revenues are right on target for compared to prior years. We did receive our first outlay of our property taxes. That's in January. So that's at 620%. Typically, we do receive more in that outlay than we do in the second. See, the intergovernmental revenues, those are going to be served revenues. And we haven't received any of those yet because we haven't billed them for any projects that we've done. We'll do, bill them typically either at the end of the year for everything or in this case, when our downtown, downtown two project is done, we'll probably send the bill after that, which is going to be before year end this year. Where you're going to see the biggest hit of, from the COVID is going to be state governmental revenue sharing and local government revenue sharing. They, the first, we received the first two quarters already of, of those sharing. So that part of the, and they've been the same. They did, those ones didn't change. This third and fourth quarters, they are right now at the state level going through the adjustments of what they're going to be, how they're going to be affected. State sales tax and mostly highway, highway distributions. And they actually did just get an email just today saying that they will have more information on sales tax, how it's going to affect the sales tax distribution. They're going to have that information tomorrow and release it next week. So that will be much more information of that. They did release the highway. They are expecting, and like I said last, I think, two times ago, that they're expecting anywhere from a 15 to a 20% decrease in that. And it really depends, they said in this email that, of the reopening, how this goes. If we reopen as, as we're going to slowly, it shouldn't be affected more than 10%. But if we open and then have to reshut down, it will obviously affect the highway tax up to 20%. Here is general fund revenue tracking. A little bit above last year's, but still right on the target for what's normal for this time of the year. Special revenue funds. Not a lot has gone on in the optic or our fiber optic yet. Capital projects fund, we haven't done any, any capital outlay in that yet. Rec fund, that one will be affected by the COVID. We have shut down all of our rec funds. Rec programs. Say, local sales tax option, that is, that one there, I will talk a little bit, get more into detail on that one at the very end. Park improvement fund, we do have all of our slips printed out. So that won't be affected at all at this point that we know of by the COVID. So that one, that one should not have any, any impact from the, from the COVID. Price, funds revenues. That's going in expenses. So that's going to be garbage, water and sewer fund. They also, all of those are right there. This, the revenue coming in might be a little affected by people who aren't able to pay their bills, but it's not going to be a long-term thing. It'll be, it could be. Have suspended the late fees on anybody who hasn't paid on time or up through the end of this, or it was up to the end of this last month. Here's just again, the annual trending over the years. Budget. Water, sewer. Here's a local option and resource city tax. First, let's talk about the local option, the 1%. The, we use, we always record our, our revenues in the month after they happen. So we've recorded all of our March, or received all of our March revenues up through the end of April. We were at three, a little under $3,000 less than last year if you compare the same month to last year. So we saw a huge increase in our grocery tax. Every one of the grocery locations was about 50% more than they did last year. So that offset the drop in all the restaurants. And so again, that is, so we've received 105,000 in March this year, 108,000 last year. So that's a very nominal difference that we received. It'll be interesting to see what April does. We'll be getting those in May. That will give us, because March wasn't fully shut down, but you also did see the rush of people going and getting stuff too. So it, I don't know if we'll see the full 50%. Year-to-date for the law tax, we actually are at 664,000. Last year, we were at 637,000. So we are, we are 4% higher now than we were last year. Or 26,000 more than we were last year. Not a concern yet in that area. Resource city tax, as we know, that is a lot different. This time of the year, there isn't a lot of renting. Actually, there isn't a lot. There is a lot less right now than there is in the summertime. So depending on how this all plays out during the summertime, I think we'll really see how this is going to affect it. Right now, this last March, in March, we received 13,000 compared to the 28,000 that we received in March of last year. So that puts us at a year-to-date of 134,000, where we were at 136,000 last year. So technically, we're right on par right now with last year, but that again, doesn't, it depends again on this, how this all is opening is. So with that said, that's what I have. Is there any other questions?
You said you're suspending late fees or forgiving them. What are we doing? Completely?
Yes.
Until when?
It was up to the end of April.
It's going to be a tough year.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sarah, for that presentation. Appreciate it. All right. And with that, our meeting this evening is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.